We'll call it over the Benton County Board Commissioners Meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all its tenacious strong.
I normally don't do this, but I will tonight. Roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schleyen?
Unexcused.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Next, moving forward. Prover amend the agenda. Monty, I see we have stuff on the dais for it?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As consent item number 11, the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Software Licensing Contract, submitted by IT.
Okay.
And then secondly, as a regular item, it's the exception to the comp time policy for the Audit Treasurer's Office. If we could add that as the third item under Administrator at 605. And those are the changes we have.
Chair, I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. County Board meetings are broadcasted live on video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area in the podium so that the viewers can hear you. County Board observes Roberts' Rules of Order for its meeting, so please obtain the Board's Chair's consent before adjusting the County Board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off the cell phones or at least put them on vibrate. Thank you. Now, open forum. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda tonight? If it's taxes and all that, we'll be doing our truth and taxation after this. Okay, so that'd be the time for you to speak, okay? With that being said, we'll move forward. Consent agenda, what we would like to do with number one through 11.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next. Monty, conduct a truth and taxation public hearing. Tonight, we're conducting a truth and taxation public meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the proposed 2023 county budget levy. And after a brief staff presentation, very brief, right, Monty?
Yes, Chair.
I will invite members of the audience to the podium for questions and comments about the proposed 2023 budget levy. If you wish to adjust the County Board, please sign up on the signup sheets on the back if you haven't already. Let's see here. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and your address. If you have come here tonight with questions about the property values on your truth and taxation notice, please sign up on a separate list in the back of the room and our Land Service Office will contact you. Please put down your telephone number and the best time for us to call. Again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the proposed budget levy, not specific property valuations. Please sign up to speak with the County Assessor and they will do their best to adjust your questions. We will now begin. Monty. That was a lot to read.
Chair, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, Mr. Chair. So, our truth and taxation chose as a post that on our county website for quite a long time. And our task tonight is to simply discuss the budget and levy and then allow the public an opportunity to, thank you, to address the board, ask questions, make comments and so on. So, we're doing here, doing this because the statute requires us to have the public meeting. I want to point out a couple of things. You see out here the, so what is the budget? Well, I guess in the most plain terms, this very detailed 64-page document is the county budget. You know, you've got all the line items associated with each department, salaries, wages, health insurance, operating expenses, so on so forth. In essence, this is the county budget, but you probably don't want me to cover each page of this line by line, so I won't do that. So, it's probably, tonight, I think we just want to try and tell the bigger picture, the bigger story of what goes into the budget. And for that, I'll just go to this document right here, and this is what's in your packet. And this was used when the Board considered the proposed budget levy back in September. So, if I may, I'd just like to cover a few items that are on this summary here. Again, the whole idea here is just to tell the bigger picture story of the proposed budget levy for '23. The proposed budget levy, excuse me, levy, it represents a 5.47% increase over '22. It's approximately 1.2 million above the '22 adopted levy. Next bullet point down shows where, even though that's a 5.47% increase, the tenure average is about 3.6%. One thing that we have talked about a lot in the past is how our tax rate continues to fall. As this shows, we're expecting almost 20% growth in our taxable market value for '23 taxes. And our tax rate should fall from 54.7% to 48.28%. One thing that's important to stress is that's down from a peak of 77.74% back in 2013. A substantial continued year in, year out reduction in the county tax rate since 2013. Oftentimes, a question comes up of, well, how's it going to affect a homeowner's taxes? And that's what the next bullet point does. A median value house in Benton County is $235,000. If its value grows by the expected 17% growth in market value, the county taxes on that home would go up about $70 in '23 or $5.23 a month. That would be the growth in that median valued house in Benton County. Moving on, I'll jump down to the next set of bullet points is, well, what's driving this increase? And oftentimes is the case, it's compensation benefits. As I've said many times in the past, county government is a very intensive, people-intensive operation, and so not surprisingly, salaries and benefits comprise a very large part of our budget. You can see of the $1.2 million increase, $960,000 is going towards salaries and benefits. So, for example, that's the general wage increase, step increases, and health insurance. Those are the three big ones that make up that increase. We also had to add back levy dollars because we used American Rescue Plan Act funds to cover revenue losses in 2022. Those are primarily in inmate boarding and in state aid for roads. We saw some things which are reducing the levy. We're seeing some additional revenue from human services for all the things that they do where they can build federal and state grant sources. We're also seeing some additional debt being paid off. We're actually down at this point to one outstanding bond issuance, so our debt service levy will fall $364,000. The Board chose to fully fund the equipment replacement plan and then the Highway Department. This is, for example, for plow trucks and front end loaders and motor graders and so on. As we heard from our county engineer, very expensive pieces of equipment. As I recall correctly, a plow truck with all the fixings is on the plus side of $300,000 these days, and that's true of a grader and a front end loader too. So, very expensive pieces of hardware. We're still seeing, of course, the effect of the rising fuel costs and just general inflation. Last couple of things is, there's not really a lot, there's really not a lot that's new in this budget levy. And really, I would just say, it's funding essentially the basic functions of county government, cost of compensation, the effects of inflation, very little that's actually new. The Board did choose to add a staff appraisal position so we can do more of this work in-house. One thing I should mention, though, is that's allowing us to retain more of that revenue that we receive for those contracts and does help to offset the cost of that position. The Board chose to increase the crack filler budget in any way so they can do more maintenance activities out there.
Thank you.
And then the Board funded a peer support program in the Sheriff's Office to help with the mental health needs of our deputies. So, I think that's it. I included in the packet a number of graphs, kind of big picture to give you a sense of where the resources come from. Of course, the biggest slice in the pie is property taxes. That's how counties generate the primary source of their revenues, is through the property tax levy. We also receive revenues from federal and state sources like highway, state aid, many other various sources in human services, grants, and so on. One thing it's, I like to point out about this graph is the small slice that's taken up by county program aid. You often heard, you often hear the term LGA, and that's the local aid that cities get. For us, the counterpart is county program aid. And now, it used to be oftentimes the cities, half of their revenues came from LGA. I think that percentage has fallen substantially in the last decade, but it's still probably in the 30% range or so. For counties, county program aid for us, we're very typical. About 5% of our operating revenue comes from county program aid. The goal of county program aid, of course, is to provide property tax relief, but you can see that effect is somewhat minimal, given its share of our overall revenue picture. Let's move on down to where does it go? You can see salaries, of course, and wages make up the largest slice of the pie. This year, we have a very large road program, so that's pushing capital projects into the second leading slot, a very large anticipated road program in '23, as you've seen in talking to highway. Lots of mill and overlays and reclaims and so on. And this is, again, a countywide all-funds source. You can see salaries, wages, and benefits make up 40% of the total. I do like to include this graph below, though, in what I call the typical budget, the typical county operating budget. In the typical budget, and you don't have all the capital projects and so on so forth, salaries and wages make up 73%. So, I, the point I'm trying to make here is that for the typical county department, that's why general wage adjustments, step increases, and health insurance can translate into fairly large levy increases, because for most departments, that's their primary expense is the personnel. The last graph is showing where the resources go by function. Top three is highway, human services, and then general government. General government is a catch-all category for things like auditor, treasurer, land services, county administrator, outside agencies like the library and so on. That's what makes up that, that slice of the pie. So, Mr. Chair, I don't really have much more than probably just take a look, a quick look at this graph. We talked about this earlier. You can see the green line is our tax rate. This goes back, this cuts off in 2014. You can see the tax rate in 2014 was 77.61%. Here we are now 10 years later, it's down to 48.28%. So, again, that has fallen consistently over the past decade. The rest of this presentation, Mr. Chair, are simply details about what we just covered that I did not intend to cover tonight, but of course, happy to answer any questions that folks may have about the budget and levy.
Board, any questions?
Mr. Chair. Monty, when's the last time there was any county program aid increase?
Well, sometimes we'll get a little bit more because of the formula, so let's exclude that for now.
How about anything significant? 20 years ago?
I'm struggling to remember. I'm sorry. I, it's been some time, yeah.
Okay.
Where it's been a significant increase. Again, usually if you apply the formula, we might get 15,000 or 20,000 more just because of the application of the formula, but it's been a long time since there's been a substantial structural bump up in county program aid.
And then my second question, if I could, Mr. Chair, is, this comes up every year, and sometimes I honestly struggle to explain it, and I don't know why it becomes such a thing to define, but you just talked about in your graph about how the county tax rate has dropped, and a lot of people will say, how can that be? Our taxes are going up. And so, can you give a good layman's term on what that definition is and why that is that way?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, basically, the tax rate, of course, is a function of math. It's your tax levy divided by your tax capacity gets you the rate. So, some of them might say, well, yeah, my taxes are still going to go up. And I would say, you know, in the name of transparency, that is actually true, because you can see here at the bottom, our levy is going to go up 1,972,000. That means we've got to collect more tax levy from someone. And oftentimes, what happens is, even though the tax rate may go down, someone may still see their taxes rise because their value is, the rate of growth in their value is exceeding the rate of the growth of the tax levy, so they may actually pay more in taxes. And it's always kind of tough, because it just, the answer so often is it depends. It depends on, you know, well, what classification of property you have, how fast is it growing? And I think oftentimes, you'll see a shifting of the tax burden. So, if one classification of property is growing radically, then like, for example, residential, you'll see a shifting of the overall burden maybe from ag or commercial to residential. And sometimes it can go in the other direction. I think probably right now, given the rapid growth of residential values, we're seeing some of that shifting occurring where more of the burden is shifting to residential property owners.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Pop?
I just had a comment that I can remember since I've been here that we had a decrease in county program aid.
We've lived through decreases too.
We have, yeah.
It was 2015, 16, somewhere's in there, there was substantial.
Sometimes the formula giveth and the formula taketh away. It depends. It's a very complex formula that includes things like your tax capacity, your crime rate. There are certain measures of poverty in there. It used to be several forms of aid which got crunched together, and those aspects of the formula were blended together. So, it is extremely complex, but sometimes, yeah, I can actually, you can see some reductions depending upon the factors which feed into the formula.
And we did hear that, you know, Governor Walz says there will be more county program aid coming to counties.
Yeah.
He said that.
You're right. He did say that, right?
He did say that.
There is 17.6 billion.
Yeah. Yep, there is. Okay, this is a public hearing.
Okay.
Anybody wish to?
Stand down for questions.
Okay. Anybody wish to address the Board at this time about this? And Brian, you will help us, right? Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Name an address, please.
Yeah, my name is Jake Bowery. Address is 2340 Pine Road in Rice. I built a new shop about two years ago for about roughly, just a hair under 300,000. And property, I pay property taxes. The valuation last year was 410,000. I built it for 300,000, and now this year, it went up substantially from 410 to 545, which is a 21% increase. And, you know, I got no problem paying my fair share, it just seems like it's a little high to run to have this valuation. To say the county thinks my shop has doubled in value in two years, 21% seems a little high, you know? I just don't want assessors leaning on the commercial people thinking that they're well off than the residential's. Just because a guy, you know, has a, builds a new shop and looks like he's, you know, doing well, you know, there's always some struggling. You know, small business struggles with the increase in inflation and prices and parts and everything. I'm just a small business owner, and I know there's not much I can do this year, correct? Right? That's.
That is correct, yeah.
Go to the assessor.
That is correct. So, what you're going to want to do is you're going to want to contact Brian or see Brian after the meeting.
Okay.
Try to get this figured out.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. You guys don't have any opinion about that? Do you think that's a little high or a little excessive, or you guys can't put any input in there?
I think we all got a lot of opinions, but I don't know if our opinions are going to matter.
Well, I'd just like to hear some feedback.
Brian, could you go ahead and address this just a little bit about how we approach all of this?
Yeah.
And what's set in state statute and everything?
Yeah.
How commercial properties are valued, the basis, yeah.
Yeah, so, just in general, I don't know the specifics. We'd have to actually look at the parcel itself. You know, was it 100% complete? Was there still some stuff that was to be done? So, as far as that goes, we'll have to look at it. The way that we value properties are based on the real estate market. So, what is the real estate market doing? So, for this year's assessment, January 2nd of 2022, we looked at property sales from October 1st of 2020 through September 30th of 2021, and we looked at like properties, what are properties selling for on the open market?
Open sales.
So, a good open market sale. So, if you sold your shop to your son, that's not a good open market sale, but if it was listed with a real estate agent and it was open market willing buyer, willing seller, what would it reasonably bring on the open market? That's what we, that's what we value it. And all types of property, including commercial industrial, had significant raises in value last year. I would say that residential properties have been going up substantially probably since 2012. Last year, residential properties, depending upon where it was in the county, because we try to look at specific areas of cities and those types of areas, but values went up 15% to 25% on residential, our average was probably 17%. On commercial industrial, one thing I will say on commercial industrial properties in general is, commercial industrial properties have been fairly flat as far as value increases from the Assessor's Office over the last four or five years. And when you don't have enough open market sales, you have to start looking at trend reports and what has it done over the last five years, and has your median ratio dropped over those last five years? So, last year, commercial industrial properties did go up 20%, 25% and apartment buildings as well. And so, instead of maybe those commercial industrial properties going up 5%, 6%, 7%, 8% a year, the last four or five years, they got it kind of at one time.
Jumped right into the last one.
Yeah, so, like I said, we can certainly look at yours and anybody else that has any questions on it, but we just want to make sure that we have the building size right, the fit and finish right. Again, you may have paid 300,000, like I'll have builders say, I put 300,000 in the building, but I built it myself. Well, we look at what does it impact the parcel if it was to sell on the market? So, that could be different from if you built it yourself or something like that. So, yeah, absolutely, we can discuss that.
So, yeah, make sure you put your name and your telephone number down so Brian can get ahold of you and meet you out there and discuss that. Sure, I just didn't want, you know, the county to lean too much on the commercial end there. Right. Yep. Yep, no, we understand. Yep.
Yeah, and I guess I would, you know, echo Monty's point. The shift this year may have gone a little bit more towards apartment buildings, actually, I think, with some of those values going up pretty significantly on apartments, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate that. Anybody else want to approach podium at this time? One more time, anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Next on the agenda, consider a January 23 general wage adjustment for non-union employees.
Mr. Chair, this topic was discussed.
Thanks, Brian.
Yes, thank you. This topic was discussed by the Labor Negotiating Committee in consultation with our labor attorney, Susan Hansen, and it was a consensus of the committee to recommend moving forward with a general wage increase of 2.5% for our non-union employees. Effective January 1st.
Mr. Chair, with the auditor changing, what will be considered about that salary?
That'll be taken care of on Monday morning at our call.
So, Commissioner, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schleyen is on your agenda for the Committee of the Whole on the 12th. The Board will discuss elected official salaries.
Okay, so that one be included with this?
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
Nope, that is not.
Yep. I believe we, you all should have a Committee of the Whole packet.
Yep.
And you'll find information in there on that topic. Yeah, there's like a salary survey, and actually, I believe there should be a table that shows what was requested by those folks.
Yep, we have all that information.
Okay.
Commissioner Pop?
So, my question to this is that as we're going through labor negotiations, and if we settle for a higher half percent or something, they will go back and get, because normally don't we give the non-unions exactly what we give unions?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pop, historically, typically, we've had some agreements in hand before the end of the year.
Yep.
So, this, this set of circumstances is a bit unusual, where we don't have the agreements in hand, so.
But does this lock it to the coming year?
So, of course, you know, with the non-union folks, the Board can go, can go back and make changes at any time that it chooses to.
I think we should do that.
Absolutely, you bet. So, that could occur.
Commissioner Kapinski.
No, you're not by any means locked into this decision today.
Right. Commissioner Kapinski.
Mr. Chair, I like the ability to go, move ahead with the 2.5%, but give that option to go back for the non-union if provided that the average is 3% to give that extra half a percent later on.
Yep.
And, Mr. Chair, this will include all our insurance increases and everything.
Well, the Boards already adopted the non-union health insurance table. That happened about a month ago, so that's already been taken care of. Yeah, that's done.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the 2.5% general wage increase for non-union employees effective January 1st, 2023.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's notable that, do you need to add on there about that that number could change in the future?
We can add it. I don't know if we have to.
I'm sure we can do it anyways, but we've had that discussion.
Well, I think that's your decision, of course. I mean, of course, you can at any point go back and change what actually you've done for the non-union folks. That can occur at any time.
I'll just add that it can be re-looked at at a later date.
Yeah.
There we go.
You're going to amend that.
Right, the understanding is clear, right?
I'll second it with that amendment, too.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the Auditor Treasurer has requested that the County Board approve an exception to the comp time policy for one employee. That employee is the primary person on elections, and back in 2018, the Board did approve an exception to the comp time policy to allow this person to be paid out in cash hour for hour, hours in excess of 40. Exempt employees are allowed to accrue a maximum of any given time of 40 hours of comp time. We're told that this employee went over by 12.4, excuse me, 12.5 hours as a result of the elections. And the Auditor Treasurer has requested that the employee, and you can see two options set forth in the agenda, either to receive cash payment for those hours lost or to be allowed to bank the hours and use them at some point later as time off.
Monty, what's your opinion, A or B?
Mr. Chair, I asked the employee a question if they had a preference, and the employee said that they preferred the cash option.
Yeah, good.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make this easy. I'm gonna move for approval of the twelve point five hours of paying out the cash option.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a mo- Monte.
Under discussion, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I know.
Hold it, hold it, Monte, settle down. We got a motion and a second. Further discussion, please. Monte, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, in the communication the Audit Treasurer has provided you, I believe that the Audit Treasurer requested this be made a permanent arrangement. Uh, you didn't ask me for my recommendation, but I'll give you one on this one. I think, you know, you do have a new Audit Treasurer coming in. Uh, I think that's an issue which should be brought before the new Audit Treasurer.
Correct.
They may change how things are organized.
Yep.
There could just be other changes we can anticipate today. So I would just urge you to make it clear that this is a one-time action today to be revisited in the future.
And I would have to agree with you. We can always act on that at a later date. So do you think we should throw that in our motion?
Please, to make it abundantly clear.
Motion maker, amend it and add that to it, please.
I will amend, um, taking a look at this later. This is not gonna be a guaranteed situation every year.
This is a one-time.
This is a one-time, one-time cash payout.
Thank you. Second?
Yep, I'll agree to the amend it.
Okay, we got amended motion and a second. Further discussion. Commissioner Slangen. Wait, just wait.
Okay, alright.
Go ahead.
Ready for me?
Yes, I am.
Okay, this, now this pay was for um just working extra hours or?
Yes, I think as, as the Audit Treasurer pointed out in the.
It was.
Had extremely long, of course, uh on election day, but also had a potential substantial hours. For example, doing training for township officials as they came in here on boardrooms, uh, there was just a lot of extra hours that were incurred during the whole election cycle. Not just election day, but in other days associated with the election. So, yeah, it was all tied to the election activities.
And that was all clarified in emails and everything that was sent to all of us.
Yeah.
And she's not considered as being part of the absentee ballot board or that type of thing, because that would be different funding?
I, to my knowledge, no, this employee was not.
Okay, it's just extra hours that she had to put in to meet the requirements to get the election done.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that one.
She got, she had extra hours for duties that needed to be with the election, but it's, but it wasn't part of the election board. She's does, it's not separate from not regular duty hours, hours considered being on a ballot board type thing.
To my knowledge, she's still on ballot board.
Right.
No, no.
So, just, so she doesn't get overtime for that? It's just regular hours?
She's considered an exempt employee, so she, she's not entitled to cash, like time and a half.
Okay.
So she's a salary employee, so she can just get hour for hour up to forty. That's the way the policy works right now, so.
Okay, interesting.
She put in way over forty.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, got it clarified.
Good, good, I'm glad. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion then?
No, I mean, I think we all know how long and hard, you know, a couple of people in that office work on the elections and I think this as well.
Yep, no, I totally agree.
So.
Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Meeting Updates. Commissioner Johnson, go ahead. You're smiling.
Love to start.
Okay.
Um, I will try to make this as brief as I can. Uh, November seventeenth, Tri-County Solid Waste uh meeting. Again, for your recollection, four members from the Stearns County Board, two from Benton and two from Sherburne. Um, short story is, it was a four to three vote to move ahead with a two percent additional increase to their contract. If you remember our discussions in the past, the current contract we have with them allows for a uh two percent increase each year. And they can also then, Pope Douglas can approach the Tri-County Board for an additional two percent increase. And they did receive that on a, a four to three vote. Um, also that evening, I was able to attend the full air care meeting uh board, uh reviewed grants, some donations. And they're actually looking at adding a staff person, uh, to be a volunteer coordinator. November twentieth, had the pleasure to attend the four H volunteer banquet. And I just wanted to recognize Commissioner Pop, he did receive Friend of the Four H Award at the end of the banquet, so that was nice and appreciative. So, thank you for all your time. I know that you've got years into that. On the twenty-first November, uh, sat in on the post-election review. Um, this was a random review of Minden Township's precinct one and two and Saint Cloud Ward two precinct four. Um, these uh random checks were selected by the State General Election Canvas Board back on November fourteenth. And uh what we went through at that time was for governor, lieutenant governor and the US District Representative uh six races. Uh, and we also um checked off the absentee ballots and the mail-in ballots. And, and again, back to Commissioner Pop's comment, that Audit Treasurer's office got a lot of time and effort put into the elections. And I was pretty impressed, uh, the Audit Treasurer, her deputy were here and then she had four of her employees going through all these ballots. And I know one of those stacks, I believe it was Minden, was five hundred plus ballots that they needed to sort through and verify. So they spent a little over an hour doing that, did a great job. Uh, November twenty-seventh, I was able to attend our last Township Broadband Committee meeting. Amanda and I went to the, up to Graham and fortunately, the majority of their townships built out. But we had our discussion with them about their support for uh uh grant applications and they're very much on board for that. Um, of course, the next day we met with our, with GLT Architects for our program meeting and you were all here for that. On November thirtieth, uh, I met, yes, that's right, you were gonna, thank you for the reminder. Uh, November thirtieth, I met for a little over an hour with our county auditors, uh, Clifton Larson. And just reviewed re, year-end procedures and answered some questions that they had. Um, was able to attend that evening, the next era presentation at the Coyote Moon and Grill with Commissioner Pop. We just sat in the back and kinda listened and it was a landowner's presentation, so it wasn't really a public meeting as such. Uh, and then last week, uh, their planning commission meeting, um, was nice. Uh, Two Rivers was here and they were requesting six additional spots up there at their campground. And so they were granted that in their application. And so they're filling in spaces that were kinda empty and they were able to add six more spots, so. Eric, I believe it's Eric, is that right?
Eric Klein, yeah.
He was here and was able to present that, so.
Great.
And of course, we were all at the AMC conference earlier this week, so, thank you.
Great, next. Okay, Commissioner Pop.
Okay, um, we had the, the, on the fifteenth, we had the library board meeting. Um, we had a huge amount of people in there that were questioning one of the books in the library that it's inappropriate. Um, little tough on the chair because we, we have a uh configuration of twelve minutes and some of them like to go over. And so we give each one two minutes. We must have had twenty-five people that wished to speak on this subject. It hasn't gone away. They gotta go through the process to, you know, um, with the executive director and the, the uh merchandise that, how it's purchased and how it's out on the shelves. And it's a, it's a book that's, um, they claim is in the ten to twelve-year-old bracket, that it's not appropriate for that age group. And that, so that took a long time. Uh, we did not have our, uh, our uh unions didn't vote at that time. Um, then we went on the twenty-ninth and we had just an executive meeting to approve. They uh signed all the labor negotiations deal and we ended up at a, at a three, two and a half, two for the next three years. And then they do have some quintiles similar to what we have for, you know, the steps and, and uh changes that we have there.
Just for clarification, that was library board.
That was library board, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so I guess I was a little surprised when we started. Um, that the demands were about the same as we're seeing, you know, and some of ours is five and six percent. One thing that, you know, kinda sat well with me is that, uh, the Morse County Commissioner says that, you know, we got this much money in the healthcare department and if, and when that's gone, we're just gonna let uh full-time positions that become open, they're gonna be open for the rest of the year and we'll deal with it next year. And that seemed to kick the can pretty hard and they came back and about twenty minutes, they had an agreement. They did not want to go that route where somebody's gonna lose their job because we're out of money. So, um, we had the BEP and that was a lot of, there was a lot of information at BEP, but a lot of it was confidential to the board and things that Amanda's doing. Uh, membership was out. We do have a little snag in our membership. For those of you that own a business or get your membership, we went to a credit card pay. And a lot of people are paying by check, including the credit card fee at the end, which technically we're gonna have to either give it back or something's gonna have to be done there to.
Gotta be changed.
Yes, and it's with the, the extra money that is, you know, it's three dollars, five dollars, a small amount. But it's still throwing off the books quite a bit. So they're, Amanda and, and the chair are gonna look at what they can do to, to get this money, their back to them or whatever. And I talked to one individual that he has an individual membership. And I says, you know, you overpaid your membership by, by uh three dollars and eighty cents. And he goes, yeah. And I said, well, we gotta send it back. He said, just keep it.
Put it as a donation, right?
Yeah, that's what he said, but, but they gotta be notified, you know, and some of it was, you know, if you're paying a, a five thousand dollar membership fee, it's substantial. I think when we were at the, at the Nextran.
Nexera?
Nexera, uh, deal, I was really impressed that, you know, the, the Brittany person says, you know, get us a membership. We didn't wanna be a part of that. Yep, uh, she had met with Amanda and Machello the, in the morning.
Good deal.
That deal, so yeah, she was, I mean, they're all in on that part. So, um, then of course the extension, that was a really good, great turnout. Holy crap, I mean.
Very good.
That, that was, Jack and Jim's was full, you know, I mean, people were there, so that was good.
Okay.
And I think that was about it.
Well, thank you for that interesting conversation.
Mr. Chair, I, I am definitely gonna be the shortest one today.
Uh, prob-
Um, I, uh, during my busy week, I ended up uh being very sick, so I wasn't able to make a lot of meetings. So I thank you for going to Graham and handling that and you handled the Stock Rapids.
Yep.
Uh, meeting. I did uh come in on the solid waste meeting, uh, virtually, because we needed quorum, so, um.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Last minute.
That was, that was good. Um, had, had a few, um, score grants we awarded and stuff like that, so nothing huge there. We had our GLT meeting. That was, I thought that was a great start to a very long process coming and I look forward to keeping that moving. Um, other than that, obviously AMC, uh, that's all I got.
Great, thank you. I too was on medical leave for most of my meetings. Uh, I did, I did have to help Career Solutions with their audit. So that took a long time to get through the process here, to clean it up. Uh, and then we had to meet in Stock Rapids for the Mahew Lake Road Study, which actually we will have, we will be having a open meeting on the twelfth of December at five o'clock, I believe it is. And we'll.
We have that on the call list, yeah?
Yep, and we'll add that later at the call.
Oh, we had that other meeting too, that online one.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, and we had another, yeah, before that one, we had another online meeting with them too. Uh, and then I also had Career Solutions today too, and that was basically just our audit. And that's all I had. Commissioner Slangen.
Okay. I was on a Zoom meeting on public safety. Monty, were you on that one too? On the twenty, twenty-eighth?
I was.
Yeah.
That was very, it was on probation funding.
Yep.
That was very educational.
And, yeah, it talks about, oh. Just this one statistic is bad enough. You get twenty-five percent of the funding from the state to help out with probations. And if, if they are, are able to be out on probation, it only costs about five percent. Jail, it's gonna cost you five thousand and if you're in prison, it's fifty-five thousand. So, yeah, you wanna try to keep it. So, and recidivism for uh bad offenders is like fifty percent. So if you can, they can get the probation that they need and the supervision, you're much better off to try to get them back into working instead of being locked away in a prison. Okay, then I was at the banquet too for um the four H. And it was nice to see all the people get their awards and working hard to work at the program. Then I had RSVP and they were working on their bylaws and updating things. Um, their volunteers are done, but they get a lot of things done and they're still looking for more volunteers to help out. And I got one of their magazines, if you wanna check out to see the kind of things they're doing. Um, and there was Career Solutions today, just working on the audit and the bylaws and structure and getting ready for maybe some changes next year, yeah.
Yeah, and with Career Solutions, we created new bylaws, so that'll be coming in front of the board for approval in our next meeting. We have to, Sterns have a board meeting tomorrow, so they're gonna approve it tomorrow, their board meeting.
And I think that's, and then the conference this week, the conference this week, everybody, yeah.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Okay, comments by commissioners? Any concerns, anything need to be brought up? Okay, sec, set committee of the whole meetings. Monte.
Okay, so you have in the, in your packet, tree, and we've got a few others. So, uh, you mentioned the Kasha One Corridor Study.
Yep.
That is Monday night, the, the twelfth at five PM, Stock Rapids.
Yep, so what we're gonna do at that meeting, we're going to present everything to the school board and to the city council.
Okay, Stock Rapids City Hall, presumably the community room. Uh, secondly, uh, the Space Needs Assesment with GLT and county departments, that's December nineteenth, beginning at nine thirty. The agreement there was that, um, that would essentially be an all-day uh session with GLT. They would meet first with Human Services at nine thirty in the Human Services Third floor conference room. And then take a tour, uh, and then proceed to meet with the rest of the departments in the government center over the course of the day. So we probably won't be done until late afternoon.
Mr, and Mr. Chair, Monte, just for clarification, when we set up these meetings, we realize that there's gonna be some days the full board isn't gonna be available, so it's kind of who from the board can be here through that process.
Correct.
Be here in the morning or you can come in the afternoon. But I don't think the expectation was that all five were gonna be here from eight to four thirty.
On the nineteenth?
On the nineteenth, yeah.
So, um.
Just for clarification, so.
So please, please join us on the nineteenth, on the, sorry, the nineteenth and uh we'll kick things off at nine thirty. Uh, we'll blow a break in there for lunch. I do have a tentative schedule I've shared with the departments and Evan, and I have not heard any concerns that that won't work. Uh, secondly, the board scheduled, uh, its next uh session with GLT for January sixth at nine. And that would be just the board and GLT. And I think the purpose of that meeting is we talk, talk about some bigger picture issues which have a significant bearing upon this pop, this project.
That's at nine?
January sixth at nine, um, yep. And again, that's just the board and GLT. A bit of overlap here, uh, you're invited by the city of Saint Cloud to a downtown summit that's al, uh, also on the twelfth. That's six PM at Rivers Edge Convention Center, if you're interested in attending that. Uh, appears they've invited some speakers to address this, the topic of, of downtown revitalization. Yes, okay, okay. Uh, and I believe last here is the MICA annual meeting, which is January nineteenth.
Yep.
Uh, beginning at two PM at Jack and Jim's. Um, yeah, two PM is the welcome and then, uh, they follow with some policy discussion, legislative forum, dinner at six. I was just actually on a call today with folks at MICA and they're attempting to get, you know, as many legislators there as they can. I know they were attempting to get the, the chairs of the House and Senate Transportation Committees and of course our local legislators as well. Uh, they said it's gonna be kinda tough because actually legislature will be in session. And uh, they may have floor sessions that afternoon. Uh, so they're still, that's a work in progress on the legislative side to get, to get folks here. Uh, actually Sandy Schoburg will be part of a discussion on, on, um, placements for uh challenging individuals, um, when, when, where counties incur substantial costs to do that. So she's gonna be part of that discussion, panel discussion with us. Um, I was inclined to just register everyone uh for this, let, let MICA know everyone will be in attendance, okay? I was inclined, if we'll just register everyone, uh, for this, that, that MICA know everyone will be in attendance, okay?
Yep.
So again, that's on the nineteenth, two P.M., Jack and Jim's.
Mr. Chair, the, the,
Commissioner Pop.
The two P.M. will be the MICA board meeting, the actual legislative forum won't start till four, I believe, right?
This is how it's described, it says, it says, it just says welcome, and, um, it says policy presentations at two oh five.
Okay.
And then the legislative forum at four.
Okay.
So, so they didn't mention a board.
They open, they open it up, and I know in the past, we've had people that, you know, they show up for the board meeting, and they just sit there, you know? And that's great, if you can, but you, it wouldn't be necessary to be there till four.
Well, I think this is a tentative agenda, I, I, I know they're still working on it, so we'll make sure you get the final agenda, yeah, yeah. Uh, that's it.
Well, thank you for that, Monte.
Sure. Could, would there, could there be a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Wholes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Nothing else in front of us, we're adjourned at six.